Hello and welcome to Voices of Women hosted by the Bristol County Commission on the Status of Women. I'm your host Gail Forts from the YWCA Southeastern Massachusetts and today's show is about Women's Advocacy Day. So today, our guests are representatives from the Bristol County Commission on the Status of Women. And today, we're going to talk about the commission, the Mass Commission, as well as the topics for Advocacy Day. So, welcome to our show everyone. Thank you for all for being here.
Thank you.
Could you all just briefly introduce yourselves?
My name is Michelle Keith and I'm a local attorney.
My name is Cynthia Rose and I've been on the commission for a year and a half and I'm a retired police officer and court magistrate.
My name is Gloria Cabral. I'm the program coordinator at Bristol Community College in the Culinary Arts and recently have retired from the commission.
Great. Well, thank you all again for being here. We appreciate that. But we have a very important topic, you know, to talk about today. It's hard to believe it's already getting ready for our women's advocacy again. The year goes by, you know, quite quickly, but we have some issues again that we have to talk about and a couple of new ones too as well. So first, let's talk a little bit about the commission itself. So maybe Michelle, you could tell us a little bit about what the Bristol Commission is and what the purpose is and what you do in our region?
Well, the Bristol County Commission on the Status of Women is a regional commission. We're one of 11 commissions statewide. And we work with the statewide commission, the Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Women. And we're very lucky that one of our commissioners, our Bristol County commissioners who started, what is it, 2009 with you?
2009, yes.
Gail, so Gail was on our first commission in Bristol County back in 2009. You were one of the co-chairs.
I was one of the original co-chairs along with Dr. Julie Parker from UMass Dartmouth. So, we had the great fortune to be able to start the commission here in Bristol County in 2009 after about three years of work prior to to-
Getting established and fighting for it to be passed.
To getting that going, right. Exactly.
In the legislature, okay.
Exactly. So it took about three years of groundwork before it was actually passed, but it was very exciting to be able to get that going.
And Jeanne Fox was with you.
And Jeanne Fox also was one of the original commissioners.
And now, this is her first year that she's serving on the Massachusetts Commission, the state commission. So we have a voice, you know, on the higher level commission, which is absolutely fantastic. But the Bristol County Commission, I'm co-chair now. We miss Gloria very much and we're very happy that Cynthia has joined us.
Thank you.
Our job is to listen to the voices of women in Bristol County and figure out how we can help. Recently, we, the Massachusetts Commission, the state commission, came down to New Bedford and we held a hearing at the New Bedford Library on February 27th. And one of the issues that came up is we had some difficulty in Fall River with some woman, one woman who was running for school committee and another woman who was running her campaign being harassed on social media, having their heads taken off of their bodies and put on sexual images and shared. And so, this came about, this is the work of the commission. We found out about this through testimony. And what we're planning now is to put together a forum for the fall called the Women's Leadership Forum where we can start to address these issues. So that's the work that we do specifically in Bristol County. And the state holds the hearing and then tries to help us and get us the resources to be an effective voice for women and also figure out how we can change the laws so that women are protected.
Great. Well, that is really helpful.
And families, yes.
Definitely. So now, it's my understanding that every region is represented now.
Yes, now.
Now, five, 11, all these years later.
Yes, at the state house just a few weeks ago. So now, this September will be the first year that we have 11 fully operating regional commissions in the state of Massachusetts, which we should be very proud of.
Definitely, definitely should be proud of that. So that's great. So Advocacy Day is, you know, is coming up on May 16th up in Boston and it's been going on for several years too. So maybe let's talk a little bit about that and overview of what people could expect if they wanted to participate and what the issues are. So I know I went to the first one, you know, by myself several years ago.
2012.
2012. And the reason I went, you know, is on behalf of the commission as well as behalf of the YWCA because advocacy is key, you know, to what we do and don't talk about issues for women and girls, you know, and their families. And to really, you know, spend the day at the state house because on a national level, the YWCA's, we do this, you know, as a group, we go to Capitol Hill. So I thought it would be similar to that, which it was. And I just thought it would be such a great experience, you know, being there myself to see what it is like to really, how can we engage other people? How can we, and I know that not all the commissioners could come, but how can we engage more people in Bristol County to actually go? And I was really surprised about the number of people who had never been to the state house before, didn't understand, you know, what it was like to actually see our senators and representatives in action and, you know, even something as simple as to have a, not simple, but to actually even just go on a tour and really see that this is something that, you know, is free, it's open to the public, you know, you can do it, you know, especially, you know, if you're a voter, these, this is people that work for us, that work for you. So I just thought it was a great opportunity to not just have the same voices all the time and how we could engage, you know, other people to do it. So that was my impetus in coming back and saying, how can we make this bigger?
But weren't you one of the commissioners behind bringing the students up? When did that start?
Yes, that started up a few years later, maybe about two or three years later. The second year, we had like a small group, I think we got, we got pulled actually up. We brought some people from the YWCA, from the Women's Fund, Martha Briggs Educational Club, some, you know, adult women that just were passionate about advocacy because it can be a little scary, I think, you know, at times too, you know, to do that. But I can tell you, I know some of our representatives and senators, but they were so appreciative that you actually, you know, you see them all the time in town, but to actually go to their office and, you know, we're very fortunate that they, you know, all in support of the issues that we were discussing, but to go actually see their office, spend some time with them, you know, and talk about the issues. So then again, the second year, it's really important to get students involved and how can we engage them in the political process? And they love to advocate. They have no fear.
They were amazing.
And I was really myself impressed with, we had students from our sister school and Global Learning Charter, both schools that I'm, you know, involved with on a day-to-day basis in different capacities, but the students were so eloquent. And they talked about the issues of how it affects them personally, how it affects their mothers. A lot of them are from single parent, you know, families and how it affects, you know, their communities. And the first year, we only brought girls, but by the second year, we had a lot of male students. And it was really, I know Gloria, you were there.
I was there.
To hear them talk about how it affects their mothers, sisters, grandmothers. I mean, I, I mean-
And even like many families, it was, you know, as a whole of the family and the father and, you know, the different roles, how roles are changing. And to see a young man sit there and say, talk about the bill and whatever else, it was very impressive.
Yeah, it was. And I think for the schools, you know, of course, this is definitely educational. It wraps into what they were doing in the classroom, but it puts it into practice of, you know, giving them lead roles, giving them talking points. And like Gloria said, they were just so eloquent in being able to speak. And I thought everybody, I know I was impressed, you know, with them. And they look forward to it. They've already reached out. When is Advocacy Day? So they made this, you know, part of what they're doing every year.
So they're already excited.
And last year, we brought students from Fall River. We had students from Durfee. We had students from Diamond Vogue.
That's great.
Two. And the past year, we had students from the Panaquid. So we want to broaden it so it's not just New Bedford based and have-
And that's great because we never had that opportunity when we were in school, never had that opportunity. So that's wonderful.
No, absolutely. So I think it's important too. So let's talk a little bit about, you know, what the day is and what, you know, to expect before we talk about the issues maybe.
What's really good this year is-
Oh, we have this.
Yes, the Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Women, the state commission has established this advocacy guide which brings you through step-by-step what to expect, how to advocate and what the legislative issues are. But I think, don't we have some video, I think we have some videos of, I don't know what year they started doing the videos with Dartmouth, I know because Cindy Marland served as a commissioner.
Yes.
And then the commission-
Almost three years ago now.
Three years ago. So we do have, we actually have online some shows from those years so that you can see what it was like. You can see the students going up, you can see the process, you know, where the students, I think, are we going to be offering bus rides this year?
Yes, we'll have bus rides. So at the end of the show, you'll see the link of where we'll have transportation. Last year, we had two busloads, so-
And they interviewed some of the students because the bus I was on, they interviewed a few of the students.
Yes, we actually, somebody from Standard Times ended up coming with us and wanted to document the whole, so that was a new experience last year, document the whole day from beginning to end. Because it is a long day for anyone who's not been to the state house. The day itself is, I think, 10 to 2.
Yes.
But it's, if you go on the bus, it's an 8 to 4. 8 to 4 days. So it's, you know, it's a day-long experience. And they have, the whole commission is there in the beginning. So you kind of get to see people from different areas of the state before you go off to your legislative visits.
So obviously, you can drive it by yourself, but if you're nervous about driving up, you can go on the bus.
Yes, bus ride's a lot of fun. It's a lot of fun, you know, several of us went, you know, you're with the students. We kind of do practice runs again. We divide up into teams. So I think this year, we're hoping to even visit as many delegates as possible from different areas of Bristol County. We're trying to, you know, branch out a little bit more to try to visit everybody.
And what was nice on those when we met as commissioners from all over Massachusetts to actually see everybody has the same issues in every community and how we have to band together.
And the Massachusetts State Commission does establish every, at the beginning of every year in the autumn, a legislative agenda for the year. So it's not like you're just blindly going up there and advocating. Obviously, if there's something that's important to you that you want to talk to your legislator about, you can do that. But there is a specific legislative agenda that you can find on the same website. If you go to the Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Women's website, you'll see a section called Legislative Agenda. And under that section, it has the legislative agenda that has passed, the effect that we've had, you know, successfully prior years. For 15 years, we tried to get the equal pay law passed. That's actually going to go into effect this summer. And what's really cool about that is that you will have to get your equal pay based upon the duties of your job, not your job title, but the actual tasks that you're doing, which is really cool. And that goes into effect this July, but they advocated for 15 years for that and then you eventually got it.
So it doesn't always happen at the first-
Not right, not right away.
It takes several years.
It takes a few years. It takes a few years. The Privacy Act was passed, you know, was part of what the commission's agenda just passed yesterday.
The Access, yes, yes.
So that was something important, you know, that we worked on.
And that was passed quickly because of the changes at the federal level.
Yes, yes, yes.
You know, so it helps. So again, like I said, we're very, you know, fortunate that our legislative body is, you know, very supportive, you know, of what we do. I know when I go to DC, they're always jealous, like of Massachusetts, like you guys have it easy. You know, a lot of things originate in Massachusetts and, you know, pass on.
And last Advocacy Day, we were very lucky. The commission actually got a chance to meet with Speaker DeLeo. And one of the things that he pointed out was that given the changes in the federal government, especially to healthcare and how that affects women and just how it rolls out across countrywide, statewide, with regard to our needs and our rights as citizens, that the speaker had set up a specific task force or committee to keep an eye on the changes in federal legislation so that Massachusetts could be ahead of the curve and be passing legislation to protect our citizens. And the Access Act, the access to proper-
And he was very thorough with us. We were able to sit with him, like about five of us, I believe.
He was dynamite.
We sat with him and he explained everything to us. So it was very, very good for him to be able to do that with us and give us his time.
Right. And trying to be on top of the curve, like it says. We want to be ahead of the curve because we're going to have, there's so many changes and every issue has been different. So we have to protect ourselves and especially as women, it gets very difficult sometimes, you know. I mean, we have some acts, you know, different things, we're on here for disability insurance. One of the things we're, you know, looking at is a difference that women have to pay higher rates for disability insurance, which is unacceptable. You know, so this is one of the, you know, legislation saying, you know, equality under the law shall not be denied or abridged because of sex, race, color, creed or national origin. Representative Ruth Balzer and Senator Jason Lewis is trying to pass this, so it's an equality right across the board for that.
And that's one of the issues that we're addressing this year.
One of the issues we're addressing.
It's unfortunate that this is not the first year. This has gone on for several years.
And it seems, you know, it seems a given that everybody's equal, so we should pay the same, you know, women live longer.
Absolutely.
Exactly. But I think we need to get the word out on that. I think a lot of people are unaware. They assume that everybody's treated equal.
That it's fair.
Because I know the first time I heard, I had no idea that women are paying more.
More for disability insurance.
So you gotta, you gotta get the word out. People need to know that.
It's like the paid leave, the family leave. I believe this is going to be-
I hope it's the year it gets passed.
I heard it four times. We've been trying to get that one.
We, as commissioners, spoke in the great hall when we first got there last year.
Last year, yes.
And we spoke about this. And this act is established, filed by Representative Gordon and also by Senator Spiker. Is that how you, I believe that's how you say your name.
Spilka.
Speaker Cameron Spilka. And this is, this would be a wonderful thing for families to have because as you know, they, families, they have their careers and if they don't have anybody to take care of their children, they can't, if they don't go to work, they don't get paid. And if they don't have medical leave, if there's somebody close to them in their household that they have to take care of, they don't get paid. So this is a very important bill. So I'm hoping maybe this year, this will get passed, but it's very, very important.
And I think that some people think because we have the Paid Sick Leave Act now that we don't need this, but that is untrue.
And this is at the state level.
This is at the state level. It's different than the Paid Sick Leave.
Right, right. So this is very important.
So hopefully, this is, this year is-
I'm hoping, I'm hoping. But we did speak about this last year and hopefully, everybody's listening, so, and we went after and spoke about it again too, to the representatives.
You know, we have the Healthy Youth Coalition, you know, this is Representatives Jim O'Day and Paul Burder and Senator Sal DeMonico. And this is very important for the kids nowadays because they are living a very free lifestyle. They have to learn, you know, they have to be taught different things. And this is, you know, on working with kids to understand the, you know, used to call it sex ed, but it's actually, it's just the education, the education both through abstinence, through contraception, through different things. They're learning, they're teaching themselves, so we need to educate them at the school levels to a, you know, options or formats or, you know, bring back the moral value, morals in many different ways, you know, and respect and, you know, because-
Fact-based.
Fact-based, fact-based respect. And that's how I look at it, is fact-based respect because it's our children's bodies and their bodies and they have to understand that. It's a, teach them all the different things that-
I mean, it's crazy the things that kids can pass on to each other. I remember when we were kids, my aunt, who was older, telling us that they all thought and they all discussed that the first time you had sex, you couldn't get pregnant. I mean, they all believed that, okay? Well, where could they correct that? It's hard to have these conversations with your children and it's uncomfortable, but wouldn't it be fantastic if they're getting the facts in school that yes, you can get pregnant at any time?
Of course, anytime, or getting it as a family, as a family, because this has to be, I have a 17-year-old now who keeps me on my toes. And, but she, when she moved in with us, it's like she was learning from her friends and her friends know more than everybody else. So that's where you get the wrong information. So let's get, you know, people in here.
And how many years has this been on?
Oh, this, probably since one of the first years that I've been on. And it makes sense. It's a lot of controversy. A lot of people feel that that should come from home or they don't discuss it at all. I mean, we've had those same conversations.
With social media, it's all out there. It's all out there.
It's all out there. I mean, my daughter is in middle school and she goes to a charter school locally and they do, you know, but you can sign off as a parent and myself personally, I feel that it's important, but I already know ahead of time, they're going to talk about it, we discuss it. But it's like you said, it's fact-based, it's not encouraging anything. It shows you both sides and it gives technological terms and everything is explained, you know, in a healthy environment.
Because that's our future.
They are our future. They are our future. So I think, you know, you can't just put your head in the sand either and think that it's not going to happen because of a lot of misconceptions out there.
These have been before legislative before, but we also have a brand new one.
We have a brand new one. Very exciting this year. Okay, so it's called an Act Supporting Working Parents Who Choose to Run for Public Office. And the sponsors are Senator Jellin and Representatives Mike Conley and Joan Machino. And basically, what it will allow is for campaign funds to be used for childcare while a candidate is running. Well, you know, they've looked at this question, they've got the statistics. If you go to the Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Women's website, they have their legislative agenda and then they have a fact sheet for every single one of the issues. And they have the statistics here talking about how, let's see, infant care in Massachusetts is over $20,000 a year, but the median income for a single parent is only $28,390. Okay, well, how the heck can you even consider running for office and becoming engaged when you can barely, you can't pay for the childcare? So it would allow campaign funds to be used for childcare while the person is running for office, doing any sort of duties that have to do with running for office. Now, this is a long shot, but it's a start.
It's a start. And that's how it is.
And one step at a time. We want to hear everybody's voices and we want to get everybody engaged. And this is something that I've gone over, you know, you guys know I do a lot of voter protection work, volunteer for that. And, you know, getting people out to vote is so important. People say, oh, my voice doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. It does. Because, just if you think about this, the lobbyists, okay, they're organized, they have money and they're going to your representatives and they're being able to say what they want. The ordinary, everyday working person is up to their eyeballs in trying to take care of their children, trying to get to their job, you know, dealing with the car breaking down, do you know what I'm saying? All these unexpected expenses and demands on your time. Who the heck has time to, you know what I'm saying, to even, to go and vote or to be involved or to advocate to your representative? And what happens is, if you're the representative and you're sitting there and you're like, you want to get re-elected, you're going to say, oh, well, who's in my office? Who's in my ear? Who's giving me the money? Who's got my attention? It's the lobbyist. And then if people don't vote, that representative, that sort of doesn't have to worry, okay? Because he or she knows, you're not voting, so I'm going to pay attention to the lobbyist. So if anything, just vote so that they know they have to listen to you.
And this act will get more women to run for office.
Yes, which is what we want, yes.
Right, exactly. In the city of Fall River, they have one female of all their-
17, 17 positions, one female.
Right, one female, which is atrocious, you know? So that's why they really, and people don't, a lot of people don't go to vote there, but one, that's ridiculous. So this act will encourage people if they know that they're going to have funds to care for their child or children while they're out campaigning. That's so important.
You know, a lot of people say, why? Why, why do we need women in the system? And a few years back, back in 2009, I went to a class at Harvard Law School and it was talking about the new lawyer and what to expect. And they talked about the fact that, you know, men tend to come from what they call the ethic of justice, which we would refer to in say like child rearing as the stick. Do you know what I'm saying? Like you did, you did the crime, you do the time, okay? And that's fine and that's appropriate. Women have a tendency, and now these are just tendencies, okay, to come from what is called the ethic of care, which is this has happened, how do we prevent it from happening? So if you've got all the men in the legislature and they're all coming from that ethic of justice, which isn't bad, okay, but they're all like, okay, we're going to punish everybody, you're missing a whole nother spectrum of the carrot. And discipline or changing cultures, the law, all of it has to do with a balance of the carrot and the stick. And we need both. And we can come up with such better ideas and we can be excellent, much, much better problem solvers than we are if we just have one gender. So it's not like we want the men out, we just want the chance to be at the table.
More equity, I mean, more equality. But it's not reflective in our offices, not just in Fall River. I mean, it's a little bit better, but I mean, if you look nationwide even, statewide.
And even if we compare ourselves to other countries.
It's not anywhere, but this, you know, helps remove a barrier for people, you know, to be able to participate, you know, in the process.
And it's common sense.
I mean, it's great to be able to do that. You're not using state money, you're not using, taking away vouchers from people. You're just using that because we know that that is part of a barrier. We did a show, you know, about women running for office and we had women that have done it successfully and some, you know, it took them a few times and some that didn't win, but you know, it was a challenge for them. And those are things that they get asked versus the men, you know, nobody even asks about that, about what were your kids if you're over here doing that? And that almost shameful, like how can you be doing this when you should be at home, you know, taking care of your children? Because we all know, you know, when you go to events, whether it's political or social, you know, there's a lot of nights, there's a lot of weekends and sometimes you can't always bring your families, you know, when you, you have to make, you shouldn't have to make that choice. You know, so this, I think, is, you know, something good. We've got to keep talking about it, you know.
Sure, sure. So hopefully, hopefully, we will.
But this is, but this is great.
Yeah, good.
So we know that the Advocacy Day is coming up. So for people that for some reason, because they're working, they can't participate or they can't go that day, what else could someone do?
I think they can email their representatives or call them and let them know which issues that they, you know, they want to advocate for. I think that's important because at least they'll know that there's people that can't be there, but they're worried about the issues before them. So I think that's one way that people can, you know, be heard.
Get on social media. Social media, you know, all the represent, they all have social media out there.
Yeah, it's true. It's a great idea.
And be a positive influence more than negative, you know, positive and say, this is what we're looking for and why? Give a reason why and make yourself known that way.
Yes. Right, because they do keep track of that. They do, they do look at that.
Yeah, we will be sharing on our, we have a Facebook page, Bristol County Commission on the Status of Women, and we will be sharing all of the Twitter accounts and emails of our senators and representatives for, so that you will have it in a section on the website before Advocacy Day. So you can go there and you can easily access that. But something that I encourage people to check out, and it's still in the developmental stage, it will be up and running 100% out of beta by the time we have the midterm elections. It's an app, especially for you young folk, called the Purple Patriot. And it tracks federal legislation, state legislation. And what is so cool is it allows you, like, you know, say there were just six of us and we were really passionate about a particular issue. We wanted to see, we wanted to track it and see what's happening with it, make phone calls, write emails. The app allows you to create your own campaign and put your own folks in there and keep track of your impact. So it takes, you know, the advocacy out of the hands of organizations, which I think it's great that we have advocacy organizations. It's very important, but it brings that, that power right down to the ordinary citizen to be able to use that app. So we're looking forward to being able to show the students that are coming up to the state house with us this year, expose them to some training on the Purple Patriot and how that they can self-organize within their classrooms and at that level, but also just across the board for any citizen. If you, if you have something that you're passionate about and you want to advocate But also just across the board for any citizen, if you, if you have something that you're passionate about and you want to advocate for, you can use that app.
And we're looking for team leaders. Last year, we had a great group of team leaders. We're always looking to train more people. So we'll be doing also a train the trainer. So to go a little bit more in-depth, you know, for these issues. Cause if you're a team leader, you want to be able to jump in. If, you know, a student or somebody else there like forgets something or leaves something out and lead teams. Cause like we said before, we want to be a little broad, more broad-based this year, hit a little bit more of the politicians, you know, up there and do a little bit more visits. So we'll be doing a couple of train the trainers too. Cause I think it's, you know, a few people have been a few times and, and they want to learn more, they want to do more and they've actually volunteered, which is great, you know, to lead a team. So it's, it's, it's really exciting. I know last year when we were in Fall River and, you know, they, a couple of legislators walked in and they did it together and they saw this large group of people, like you could see how excited that they were to see, you know, students and adults and a lot of youth. But they, you know, they understand that. And some of them, you know, going to be 18, they were graduating seniors, you know, they were going to be voting, you know, for the first time in November. And, you know, how important, you know, it is to, you know, vote locally, statewide, midterm elections, you know, is, is really important. But like you said, making those phone calls, emails. You know, it's crucial to that. So we have that coming up and I think you have a few other events coming up.
Oh, we're real excited about the, the just asked, the salary negotiation workshops. With the State Treasurer.
Oh, with the State Treasurer.
Deb Goldberg, the State Treasurer's office, they're going to be coming up. They're going to, they're going to be announcing it on April 10th. But it's, um, the State Treasurer's office, okay, the Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Women and obviously the 11 regional commissions that fall under that commission, uh, the community colleges throughout the state, and then the American Association of University Women. It's their content. They had, you know, two different salary negotiation workshops, one geared for students and one geared for, for older folks. Okay, work smart and I think start smart. Okay. And they're going to be offering, I think the Y has done this.
We have done this before.
Yes. And I know they've had them at UMass. Yes, but what's really exciting is this collaboration is going to be offering them statewide. Every county commission is going to do at least two workshops this year.
Oh, that's great.
Okay. And so we'll have at least two at Bristol County. Now, we can do more than that and we intend to do more than that. So the commissioners all get a chance to get trained and become a certified salary trainer negotiator.
Wonderful, that's great.
Isn't that great?
And I know one of the commissioners, um, Commissioner Sylvia Gohm, she just had, I wasn't, I was out of, out of state, but she just had a financial workshop.
Yes, yes.
Sylvia, right, with Martha Briggs. Right. And, um. Last year, the State Treasurer had, yes, came down. They had one at our sister school in partnership with the YW and Women's Fund.
So it was Citizens Bank, Martha Briggs, I think the Kate Burdian Association.
And the YW, you guys were. We had one last year, but, um, the State Treasurer's office had said that they wanted, they wanted to do more of that and more looking.
And that was about managing your, your finances.
Absolutely.
And it was great.
We had students there that they were so excited. They wanted more, cause we have, we have several interns, you know, and they wanted more.
Sylvia has also talked about us, uh, potentially putting together, now, you know, we can't necessarily give specific legal advice, but we can talk about topics like, you know, you know, a healthcare proxy, what do you do about a healthcare proxy? What do you do about a will? What are the things that you have to do to get your house in order legally that most people wouldn't have access to, wouldn't even have the money to do it? And then trying to find some low bono options, some, some basics and maybe some pro bono options so that they can take care of those legal issues that cause trouble.
The student loan thing was very good because I had a student with me and, and just understanding about student loans.
Gloria was there for the workshop the whole day.
And she was like, it was a great step. Cause she just graduated, she was just getting over her loan, you know, starting the loan process and all that. And it was very helpful to her. Cause you want to be able to have your children move out of your house when they graduate. So now how can they do it financially, uh, safe?
Good, good. So that's great. We have some exciting things that I'm sure you'll be showing on your Facebook page. Yes, yes, very, very excited. And every single Bristol County Commissioner is an editor of the page. And we all have access to Twitter. Now, we have a Twitter account. And, uh, we're working really hard to try to reach out to every single county in Bristol County and make sure that we're listening to the issues that affect everybody.
And that's important because when I became a commissioner, I didn't even know about this, the Commission on the Status of Women Bristol County. I never knew it existed. And everybody that I tell about it, they know very little about it. So that's important that people are going to be able to go to a, a site and find out all about it and about the issues. So.
That's true. That's great. So, you know, as we're, you know, ending up, so final thoughts that you want our viewers to know about the, either the commission or the advocacy day?
Oh, I'm hoping everybody attends. And it was such a, a good day last year. And I want to see more younger people attend. So hopefully they'll get the word out there. And it, it's just a great day to interact with everybody and to learn exactly how our government works. You know, it's, it's a good thing. So I'm hoping that that's what happens.
With civics and everything changing, you know, how the educational system is changing, the students and the kids need to understand what the government is like. You know, just don't, you know, just because it's on Facebook, doesn't mean it's real. So they have to sit there and they have to get involved and they have to be part of something. So this is a great way for them to start being part of something, to see the process. And once they process it, then they hopefully will want more and learn more and will develop into fine voting citizens.
Right, right. And since Parkland, I mean, everybody knows what happened there. The students have come forward and they've made a difference in the state of Florida and nationwide. They have made a difference, you know, on their issues, so.
No, and they, you know, they're not going to back down. They want their issues hard.
And, and people are listening to them, you know.
Just they need to review facts.
And that, that reminds me of when it was a civil rights time, you know, they came forward and, and people listened and look what happened. So, you know, hopefully more younger people will get involved. So.
Um, it's, it's Wednesday, May 16th.
Wednesday, May 16th, okay.
We have the guide on how to advocate. We have all the legislative, uh, sheets and legislative agenda on the website. But we need the people. We, we need everybody to be concerned. And one of the things that personally I've been experiencing, you know, I've always been active, but there seems to be a little bit of burnout and that so many people have been speaking up, that they're tired. And I would encourage people to not give up, that, you know, it really does matter. And, you know, just being there at the table, saying to your legislator, please pay attention to this, does count for something. And, um, I just ask folks to don't give up, stay engaged, even if you just can come out on advocacy day. And then you go away and take a little bit of a break. Because it does get exhausting, you know, but, and make sure that you vote this November. It's really important.
So make sure that you join us. It's a free event. There's no charge.
Yes.
You know, to go, even the bus that we provide is, is for free.
They just need you to register.
Just need you to register in advance in case we need a second bus. You know, right now, I've only have one on hold until we get, you know, more people, you know, attending. Lunch is provided, snacks on the bus. We have a lot of fun. It's a great day, dress comfortably.
Yes, yes.
I know last year was about 95 degrees.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, you can wear your sneakers. One of the things I love about treasurer is that she wears sneakers. She's got her suit on, she's got her sneakers on so she can move fast. But I mean, just be comfortable. Um, the other thing is, it, I mean, it's kind of mushy, but, you know, when you go there and you're at the State House in, in Boston, this is a historic house. We've had so much happen there. It's, it's so much of the birth of our nation that right there. I mean, it's very exciting just to be standing in the same place where so much happened to change the world.
When you're part of that.
How lucky are we? That is so cool. I mean, I still get mushy.
Right. We're going to have some tours for the students that go and any adults, I mean, to see the Hall of Flags.
It's amazing. It's inspirational. It is inspirational.
So we're adding that in to, you know, organized tours for people that want, you know, that want to do it.
And to be a woman and to be there. In a place where it just was men before. That's.
It's exciting.
It's really cool.
Well, thank you all so much for being here. You know, we appreciate it. Thank you for all the good work keeping the commission, you know, going.
Well, thank you for letting us go in, girl.
I was, you know, it was a pleasure, you know, to be able to start and get it and making a difference. And it's nice to see, you know, it grow and, you know, doing all of, all of that great work. And so great way to be able to partner, you know, forever, you know, so great. So thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
And thank you for watching Voices of Women.